Okay, welcome everyone. Thank you for being here. We will now open our meeting, our city council meeting. It's July 20th. It is now 4:30 PM. We'll call this meeting to order. Okay, and if Mr. Crisp, you can lead us in our invocation, and if Mr. Molina, you don't mind after that.
Sure.
The pledge of allegiance?
Yes, rise. If you would, bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you today with willing hearts and an open minds. We pray that you will fill them both with your grace and your will, and that you will look upon the things that we do with the eye of a father, and help us, lead us into the direction in which we can better serve our community and those that we are here to serve as you serve. Dear Jesus, we hope to serve you, we hope to serve this community, and we hope that you watch over us, and watch over those who are out there doing the part of the jobs that run in while everybody else runs out. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. Please turn and face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to agenda item number two, citizen comments and public announcements. We'll go ahead and start with council. Mrs. Bowen, do you have any public announcements or anything you'd like to announce?
No, just that I've noticed that a lot of vacation Bible school camps are going on, so I wish them all the best, and to have a lot of fun, and to stay safe. That's about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No?
I have no comments. None at this time, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, and citizen comments, we did have someone that filled out a form, but Mr. Acuna? Okay. And then we'll go ahead and move on to agenda item number three. We're very proud and honored to, we will have a recognition of our Coastal Bend Golden Rams All-Star Platinum Bracket Championship winners, Mr. Will Flores and Mr. Gigi Vasquez, and their coach, Mr. Cookie Rosales. So if council will join me in giving our recognition to...
Congratulations on behalf of the City of Valles. We're glad to recognize you, and on your accomplishment, very proud of you. Thank you for representing us, bringing you down. So this is presented to Mr. Will Flores, what about? And... And then Mr. Gigi Vasquez, let's go. Congratulations on behalf of the City of Valles. We're very proud of you. Thank you for representing us. And congratulations on your achievement. Join council.
Yeah, thank you very much.
And Coach, congratulations. Thank you for guiding these young gentlemen into a championship, all their hard work and your dedication. So this is in recognition on behalf of the City of Valles.
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
You got it, Gigi?
I think they have one on.
Oh my goodness.
Well, I'll put it down here. I'll hold it in the middle of my...
Thank you so much, guys.
Congratulations.
Get in the honor, man. One more.
With the baby, hold on.
Here, let him hold this. Don't drop it, always.
You got it? You got it? It's bigger than you are. I am, too. Ross, still over one, you got it?
Thank you so much, guys. Thank y'all so much.
That's awesome, thank you. Thank you.
I just want to know when my chair made it outside.
What?
Thank you. That was wonderful. Okay, so we'll move on to agenda item number four. Information from the city manager, update on parks and fields and water system.
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to give you guys an update on some of the things that we've done at the parks and the fields here in the last few months. There's been a construction of new restrooms at the Girl's Fast Pitch and American Field. It's almost complete. We put a new mound in, did infield conditioning. We applied the windscreen for the Girls' Fast Pitch, and installed a telescopic flagpole, added dirt. The Pee Wee Field, new pitcher's plate, plumbing supplies for the bathroom, scoreboard rentals on the American Field, new roof and repairs to that concession stand, and we did repairs to that chain link fence, and also added dirt. The Pony Field, repairs to the restrooms, and added a new roof. At the Buena Vista Field, rope and hooks for the flagpole, dirt, and also did weed controls. So there's been, was a lot of activity the past few months at the ballparks, and trying to get those, you know, back to where they should be in nice and workable condition. Also, on the water system updates, the Water Authority approved some funding, and previously, and we got some, the holding tank at our water treatment plant had a flange that had been not operable, and so we were finally able to get that done. We drained that water out, realized that there was a lot of sludge in there, and Water Authority approved getting that repaired and dredged it out to get all that sludge out. That holding tank was less than 25% capacity, so they approved that right away. And also, we added two more intakes to the raw water transmission line from Lake Finley to the water treatment plant, which pretty much gives us a complete bypass. There was one already there. That one is not enough to get flow, or not enough to get enough water to our holding tank, and so we added two. So now, if anything happens at Lake Finley on the pump station, we get six, two, three six-inch pumps, and we can pump directly into our transmission line, and still be operable. So it's a big accomplishment for our water department, and they did a lot of work, a lot of hard work, and all that done.
Thank you. Thank you for that, okay.
Thank you, Michael.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Before we open up agenda item number five, council member Sandra Bowen has submitted a conflict disclosure statement, so she will step out at this time. So I'll open up agenda item number five, discussion regarding San Diego Creek Levy.
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to give you guys an update on the levy and levy status. It's been something we've been working on since I came in in 2018. We had a contract to do preliminary engineering. It was about a $350,000 contract, I believe. And before we, before, I didn't sign that. We did some work to kind of double-check some of the numbers that were out there, knowing that that engineering contract would turn into construction also. And if I remember correctly, it was going to be over like $2 million or something for some repairs that were supposed to be needed. So we went out there and did some work, got elevations, and realized that the elevations that, and I mean, our engineering department spent a lot of time, you know, every 10 or so feet, getting elevations. And all those elevations showed that the spillway, of course, the north side, the levees on the south side of San Diego Creek. The north side, there's no levy, it's just the spillway. Most of it are actually all, it's all lower than even the earth part of the levy. And so, we were trying to, we were trying to get with the Army Corps of Engineers to explain these things to them, to say, you know, I think some numbers are incorrect, what they have as far as elevation of our earth levy part. And this has been a long project that has been working on over the years. I know that it started in 2009, I believe. And then when I came in as an appointed city council member in 2010, that project had already begun. So I know John was mayor at the time, so we've both kind of seen it progress through the years. And one of the things is, there was an installation of a concrete, additional concrete barrier on top of a portion of the levy. And there was some question as to whether that was done to specs that Army Corps of Engineers were happy with. And so that was one thing that was needed to get looked at. And there were some other issues during the inspection that was done prior to '17 with, you know, land that needed to be cleared, and obstructions, and some drainage things. And a lot of that got addressed. And we were really just kind of left with this big thing about the concrete portion of the levy. And we actually met with the Army Corps of Engineers in Galveston in an in-person meeting late 2018. I gave them a presentation about the numbers, showing them that even the earth part of the levy, if anything goes up, it's going to cross the north side. It's not going to get to the earth part, pass the earth part of the levy. Army Corps of Engineers told us, things have changed now, that they pretty much in essence serve as an insurance company for your levy. When it's certified, certified, you're in their program. And if you're in their program, and there's a fault in the levy, then they come in and repair it at their cost. If you're not in their program, then they don't repair it. You have to pay for the repair of any breaches or things like that. So then we went on to FEMA. Couldn't get an in-person meeting, but we had two separate conference calls with FEMA, talking about the numbers and the elevations that we had. And during those meetings, they said, you know, we just used old numbers based on, on, yeah, prior to the eighties, I believe, is what they used. And they said that they would look at them, because we gave them the presentation as well, showed them what we had found. And during that time, so they, this was in 2019, they said that we were going to get funded to do preliminary base engineering. So they were going to relook at numbers for us. What they told us is, we would be first on the list of anybody who has not been awarded any kind of work, and that didn't finish. So we would be first on the list of new people. They told us that was going to be about March of 2020. So we followed up, and, you know, during COVID, it was hard to get anybody from FEMA to contact us. And finally contacted them again. They said, yeah, we're still on their list to get some more engineering done. And what they said is, well, you guys don't need to worry, because you're still accredited. Your zone, that flood zone is XO, and the map showed it as being XO, which is reduced risk because of a levy. And when they get around to getting some, you know, additional engineering, they'll get that done. So right now, I know there were some concern about whether we're covered or not. And if you look in your packet, you have the summary of what FEMA shows as recent as June 26th of this year. And it shows that we are in an accredited levy system, and we are active in the rehab program of the Army Corps of Engineers. Two separate things there. And I just wanted to kind of show you, see, on the other page, it shows the San Diego Creek levy, but in Duval County. So when you try to search for the San Diego Creek, it shows both levies, but it shows, you know, what a non-accredited would look like and not enrolled. And so, that's where we are in there. I did most, last week, did have a conversation with the Army Corps of Engineers, and they do want to do another inspection. They pretty much said that they understand, you know, after our meeting with them, they needed to come back and relook at what we've done. And they apologize for not coming sooner, but they do want to, they plan on being here before October 1st, and doing another inspection, and helping us with any deficiencies that they said they had before. Because a lot of those have been cleared. Really, the only big thing that was an issue was a concrete barrier on top. But if you look at the numbers of the levy, the earth part, I believe I was looking at it, 212 is the lowest point of the earth part. And 203 is the lowest point on the north side. So the spillway is at 203 in some areas. And yeah, it jumps up to 210 and 211 in some areas. But overall, you know, water's going to find the lowest point to go, and it is going to go north. Now, remember that the levy doesn't go past Maple Street, which runs between Cameron and Texas Boulevard. That point is where the levy stops, and then there's no more levy. It's just a San Diego Creek system. And so there, and doesn't have, that portion doesn't have anything to do with the levy and any of this. Water, that is a spillway that will come down Texas Boulevard. And so that's still the same flood zone that's been there all this time. But, so, you know, wanted to give you guys an update. We're still working on it. We're still waiting for FEMA to come in. We're still, and we're still waiting on Army Corps of Engineers to come in as well. And when they do their inspection, they're going to come in, and we'll visit, and we'll be with them. When FEMA comes in and does some elevations, you know, I don't know. You know, they haven't given us that kind of, you know, information as, yeah, we'll call you, we'll set an appointment, but Army Corps of Engineers certainly has. So really, that's my update on the levy. I mean, it's, the system shows to be accredited. There's probably some things that we may need to do. There's some vegetation that has grown throughout the years, but it's on the north side, it's on the levy side.
The reason for wanting it on the agenda was mainly because... Of the reports that we have received, I know that it's kind of different. FEMA, we're talking about the flood map, the rate map, and then we're talking about Army Corps of Engineers, which you said was where they go ahead and have, or have as part of a program, that if there's a break or a problem, I can't, I'm lost for words on what I'm trying to, but if there's some kind of compromise because of a flood event, and we are part of that program, they would cover, like you said. But if not, then we run that cost. But I know that back in '17, our engineer, our city engineer, presented a report to us, and I think Mr. Crisp, you were here, so you might remember that. And there were some deficiencies. So that's why I wanted to bring it back, because I was, in that report, when I reviewed it, it did show that there were some cracks, and this is after the 2010 repairs.
Right.
And then it also addressed the wall, or whatever was built up. And I think in that presentation, Mr., our previous engineer, said that there was something that they were requesting, as far as anchoring or something. But there was a 408 form that they said we did not present. So I, I was, this is the reason I wanted to bring it up, because I wanted to make sure. Because in that report, it also said that we are due for a second or another inspection, a periodic inspection in 2022. So I kind of just wanted to make sure we're doing our due diligence. There's also supposed to be an operation and management, I believe, manual that we all agree, like the city and county, on what part we're responsible for, and so on and so forth. And I know some of the things were corrected in July of '18, if I'm not mistaken, where they cleared out some of the vegetation, they built out some of the walls that they said was due to erosion. I just kind of wanted to know, where are we at, and what maintenance have we done, so that we're also doing our due diligence and protecting our citizens, too? And that's basically, because I haven't seen anything since that July 2018. So that's what I kind of wanted to get an update from you. What are we doing?
If I'm not mistaken, with the, using the efforts of, I think it was Juan and the congressman, something like that, when we did, the city did their elevation retracting, that it was so off, that the heights were so different, that once that reporting went in, basically, we fell off of the radar on a lot of that stuff, because it no longer existed. The reporting, the initial reporting, and what happened with the 2017 reports, and what we presented, were so different. And we had to actually, if I'm not mistaken, we did have to bring in our congressman and Juan in order to present this stuff, to save us from having to build that barrier across. Because what FEMA had, when they were going to un-accredit us, and that's when, that was in 2017, is when, I can't think of his name, gentleman, the engineer that left is no longer...
Oh, Joe Salisbury.
Yeah, yeah. No, no.
Mr. Moda.
Oh, it was, it was...
Mr. Moda.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Right.
When he was here, and he had presented. Thereafter, they resurvayed, and the elevations were different. We brought in Juan and his, and our congressman's team, and that's when they realized that, no, our elevation is to point. They just have to come back and resurvey. So we're at a lot better place than we thought we were, and they recognize it. We just got to wait for FEMA. But FEMA recognizes the fact that we have surveyed, and they re-accredited us in an effort to say, hey, we do have to come back in and validate what you had to say.
Yeah, and I don't think it's so much the elevations that I was more kind of wanting to know with the cracks in the levy, those type of things. Because it is in there, and I wanted to know.
Yeah, well, on the concrete part of the levy, and what's interesting is, I mean, that's, it was like at 212, and then, and that's on the, on the earth part is 212, and then we go up from there, the levy like three feet.
Well, I think it was in '18, if I'm not mistaken, where it still showed the update.
Well, no, no, I'm saying the elevation, the 212 feet. And so the thing is, is that what we were telling them is, this levy that was built is above the base flood elevation by at least a foot for freeboard. And that is where, so does it even matter? And that was the argument that we had with the Army Corps of Engineers. And they said, well, yeah, we understand, we'll do that reinspection, but you need to get FEMA to do some elevation work. And that's why we went to FEMA. And what, we are under what they consider seclusion. And that's what Larry Vois with FEMA is who we're dealing with. And so they understand that they need to come back and look at it.
So the, what was on that report as far as deficiencies with cracks and whatever, those have not been addressed?
No.
Okay.
Nothing to do with the concrete has been addressed.
And the missing segment, I think it was 100 feet of, is it flood wall or something?
That would be on the, yeah.
On the Duval side, or?
That's on the north side. That's when it starts dropping down to 205, 202. But that's where the levy pretty much ends, on that end.
So that missing portion doesn't, it's not relevant to anything?
Well, I guess when they come back, they'll let us know whether it is relevant.
Whose ball is according right now? Is it in ours or theirs?
No, it's in theirs. Yeah.
That's for the, you're talking about the rates, the elevations and stuff, right? But ultimate, it still will come back to us if they find anything?
If, if, and here's what, if they come back and they realize that our elevations are right, and the earth part of the levy is where it is, where we took all those elevation shots, and that's where it is, then the concrete part is going to be a non-issue. And so then, you know, we're talking about, it just gives a little bit additional help. Whether it would be needed or not, you know, based on the north side of the creek, it doesn't look like it'd be needed, because the spillway is on the north side. And so, yeah, we're going to, we're going to hear from Army Corps of Engineers sooner than we're going to hear from FEMA.
All right, I just, I just wanted us to be prepared. I don't want, you know, especially if we already had, like, something that said it was going to cost this dollar amount or whatever.
So you all can understand, so the people out there can understand, you don't have to be freaking out, thinking that the levy isn't working. Agency-wise, administratively-wise, they, the federal government said, the levy is fine, it's protecting the areas the city has that needs to protect. Fact of the matter is, is there was a study some time ago where they determined deficiencies, deficiencies with other things. Our city staff said, wait a second, some of those deficiencies are incorrect based upon elevation. Your elevation numbers are wrong. They redid those numbers, and they redid those numbers on the other deficiencies, like potential cracks in a concrete barrier that was established when I was the mayor, that they're not relevant due to the height. They have to come back in, and as part of, and we would have hoped it would have happened sooner, but as far as 2022, as the mayor has said, they're going to come back in, and they need to look at it, the Corps needs to come in and do some stuff, and FEMA needs to come in and shoot elevations. But right now, the levy is doing everything that the federal government says that it needs to do. It's not failing.
What is the 408? What was that, that we were lacking? That we didn't supply when we submitted our, I don't know if it was when we submitted, I can't recall what it was, but what is a 408 form that we did not submit to them?
If you're asking, if you're asking me, Mayor, or Michael, as far...
Michael, or, yeah.
I'm not sure when we, when would that have been? I mean, is that...
In the June, July, I'm sorry, 13th, 2017 presentation, and in that report, it says that we did not have a form 408 that was not submitted, and they were requesting that. So I was just wondering if that 408, if we didn't submit certain corrections plans or something to show them, and if we have them, and that would, I don't know.
We haven't.
Well, the key issue is, is Mayor, since that time, city administration has given FEMA and the Corps all of the information that they had wanted or requested. And so whether something was deficient back in 2017, after Michael, or Mr. Sparson being hired as city manager, who made this project, one of the things that he did is he cleared the areas of brush and whatnot inside the city responsibility and outside, just so we could try to meet these standards. Additionally, he got with the congressman's office and went to Houston and had a meeting with the Corps, and then as he described with FEMA. And at present, the issues that they had raised in 2017, at the very least, are on hold. Because they don't have sufficient data to show that the deficiencies from 2017 are actually correct or actually affect the flood protection. And so at this juncture, until they come back in 2022, unless they come up with something else, administratively, federal government-wise, we are fine. Now, that's not to say they won't find anything, where they come back and there's not other things that we need to do. But the present state, as far as the federal government is concerned, everything's okay.
Okay. I just was, because of our letter of intent, and then we were trying to get into that program, I just kind of wanted to get an update, where we're at, what we're doing, and just to inform everyone. So, and just also bring council up to speed. But just be knowledgeable about that. And if there's any action, hopefully, we'll address it later. Thank you.
And you staff for staying on top of that.
Okay, we'll move on to agenda item number six.
Yeah.
Yes. Discuss, consider, and act upon approval of city council minutes for the June 15th, 2021 city council meeting.
Mayor, I didn't see you.
No? Counsel, any? And at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I move for approval of the city council minutes for the June 15th, 2021 meeting.
Second. Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And we'll go on to agenda item number seven. Presentation and discussion from Bill Norris, with Norris Lial, regarding groundwater project, Texas Water Development Phase One and Phase Two, including P3 updates on water project. Thank you, Mr. Crisp.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. Just a brief update, doesn't mean that a lot of things aren't moving in the background since the last meeting. Probably the highlight is, we've gone through the P3 contractors' contract on the engineering standpoint, and so... Um, and so, uh, we went through step by step, met with, uh, Seven Cs, probably two weeks ago. And we went through every parts of the contract related to engineering. So I'm not, I'm not the attorney. So now that we've agreed upon what engineering that, and the construction that the city's going to do, and what engineering and construction that the, uh, P3 contractor is going to do, now it's time to look at the, the legal side. And I think we've got, we're going to try to set up a meeting, uh, with city, city attorney and, um, their attorney and, and us to kind of go through the contract from that standpoint to protect the city. I can protect, protect the city from the engineering side, but, you know, there's, there's a lot of terms and conditions that not, not under my bailiwick, so I'm glad that's going to happen. So we also have to deal with the water vomit board on phase one, which is the first well. We have, uh, money left over from that phase, which will be used in the second phase for the second well. And so I've reconciled most of the budget between phase one and phase two. And then that's what I've got to present, uh, to the water vomit board to make sure that they're okay with transferring money from one, one part to the next. And so that's where we are. I'm hoping to have all that completed by the end of this month so that, um, we can move that forward. There's a lot of moving parts, and one doesn't work without the other. So, uh, I know that they're going to want to have some type of an agreement with, on the P3 before they approve the second phase of the project as well. So one doesn't go along without the other, and that's what we're trying to, to juggle that as we, as we speak. So that's, that's pretty much it. Uh, hopefully the next, the next meeting, we'll say, we've got to sign this and sign that. Can't guarantee that, but, um, you know, that's, that's kind of the goal.
Okay, counsel, Ms. Bowen, any questions?
No, just thank you.
Mr. Burke?
No.
Mr. Molina?
No question.
Mr. Chris?
No, I just want to say thank you for, for your efforts. And Michael, and I know that John's been, uh, been diving into the documentation as well. So thank you all very much for, for staying involved and keeping this ball going.
We've been having fun. Thank you for the support and patience, because this is one that's going to take patience.
I mean, can we, can we not have patience? This is, we're trying to do something at this level.
Okay, what can I do?
We're kind of stuck here, right? So I'd like to get it done quicker, but we know how things go.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to agenda item number eight. Delivery of 2021 certified values as certified by Jim Wells County Appraisal District.
Mayor, counsel, whichever of your package is the certificate, certification of the 2021 appraisal road, uh, for the city of Alice. The net taxable value that came in, um, from the appraisal district is $819,593,399. And that's up from last year's, uh, net taxable value of $782,637,933. So that went up quite a bit. So there's, the jump is from, um, looks like the real estate just jumped about, uh, five million or so. And, uh, commercial personal property stayed about the same, but the industrial personal property went from 117 million to 149 million. So there's some, uh, some things coming back into town, uh, industry-wise, that, that are helping the overall net taxable value.
And that's, uh, that's new assets coming in, or is that the expansion of, of the influx or, um, inflation of values that currently exist?
Hard to tell. Uh, you know, that's, this is really the general number that we get from them. Where, what, you know, seeing some of the new, there's got to be some new businesses coming into town. There's been a few, so it's got to be a combination. But, you know, really have to deep down with, uh, dig deep with the appraisal district to get that, that answer.
Because I know they've, they've submitted reports like that in the past, and usually they come like the next report they'll give us. It's a little bit more detailed, so that's a question to ask.
Counsel, any other questions? There's no further questions, let's see. We'll go to agenda item number nine. Discuss, consider, and act upon prioritizing American Rescue Plan funds allocated to the city of Alice.
Mayor and counsel, we want to bring this up for you guys, uh, on the art money that we're getting in. I know, uh, Patrick, um, and, uh, Roland have been working on this, um, quite a bit. So, uh, so we'll go through these slides. So we're scheduled. What we're scheduled to, to get is a little over $4 million. Um, and that first deposit for, uh, this fiscal year hasn't come in yet, right, Roland? We're expecting that, when are we expecting that from here?
August 2nd is when they're going to submit.
Okay.
For the request for the funding from the state level, and then we should be getting it a little bit shortly after that.
And the second portion we're expected to get, uh, about the same time from, uh, uh, next, next summer.
That's correct.
Second slide is about the CARES Act, just to give you an idea. Roland, you want to go over that slide, uh, on that, what y'all have done on that?
No, we were awarded, uh, $1,037,410, and that was from March 2020 through December 2020. Uh, we submitted that in, in November. Um, that, that was predominantly for first responders, overtime, and we have received that, that, uh, amount already. Expenses, uh, from March 2020 through December 2020, this was for, this was the portion that was not reimbursed from, from the CARES Act. It was $181,134. That, that's excluding salaries and overtime.
Okay. So on this, uh, new art money that we were figuring from the sample level, where it would go, there's a lot of different ways that this money can be allocated, but, you know, for our purposes, we, now that we have the lost sales tax revenue, which obviously, you know, hurt us quite a bit. And the other thing that it can be allocated for is, uh, uh, water and wastewater projects, which obviously that is one of our biggest efficiencies that we have here. A lot of the, you know, aging infrastructure, aging water lines, uh, aging sewer lines. And so, um, our thought process was, um, putting about 1.2 million into, uh, water and sewer lines. And then the balance, I mean, our, our loss, our loss of revenue was 1.2 million. But using the 1.2 into, uh, water wastewater lines and the balance of that going to, uh, to the lost revenue. And so if you go to the next slide, you'll see that, uh, we separated sewer lines, 86.1 miles, a total of $454,000. And on the, um, water lines, um, I just got, uh, progressive lenses, and now I'm realizing how, uh, how they, how they work. Yeah. And so the, um, water line's a total of 99 miles, and that's $526,000. If you look at the, the next slide, these are some of the, um, water and sewer lines from the streets affected. And we were thinking that this would be, uh, the first, um, projects that we would work on with this money that we get, uh, uh, starting in August. And some of these are places, you know, on the sewer line where we pump pretty regularly. Uh, sometimes there's daily where we have to pump on sewer lines. Uh, some of these are areas that have had the two-inch water lines and multiple connections, uh, on the two-inch water lines more than, than we should have for two-inch water lines. Granted, these are old areas that have been that way, and wanting to, uh, to upgrade those. And, uh, if you have a, a two-inch water line that has been there, uh, for 50 years, and it's iron, and it's no longer two inches inside, it kind of, the rust comes in and goes down to, uh, some places trickle. So we're, we've got to get some of those things done. And this is to us, and if you guys agree, with best use of, of this money is to work on the aging infrastructure. And, um, you know, Public Works and Finance and sat through and figured out, uh, more or less, the streets that would need to be worked on. And, uh, the last slide, of course, shows, um, uh, some of the initial things that we would look on at, um, fiscal year 2022, which would be, uh, uh, the downtown area and then some South Cameron. There's a big crunk line on, on South Cameron that needs to be replaced. Uh, there's been, you know, an ongoing project, an ongoing place where we repair. So what we wanted to do is get from you guys the okay that this is more or less where, um, as far as the dollar amounts, where you want us to proceed as far as putting this money in. You know, the first part was to fund the lost revenue, and the second part to put it under water and wastewater. I know there's a lot of different things that you can do with this money, but for our purposes, you know, this is, this is kind of emergency a lot of these places on water and wastewater. Now, uh, if you guys approve, then we'll, we'll go down and, and drill down further from the stipend level as to harder costs on these streets. And we'll probably, you know, we were doing, uh, our Public Works Department was doing a ballpark on the streets as far as how much they're going to cost, but now we'll go and drill down further. And they'll probably be, um, we'll be able to add more streets to these and maybe move up some of the, uh, either downtown or some of the Cameron Street up, because, you know, we, we were conservative on our numbers and, uh, but once we drill down and, and tighten them up, we can probably add more streets to these. And they're looking at the, the ones that are necessary, you know, emergency type of situation.
Counsel, any questions? Mr. Chris?
Mike, I know, I know you just said that there's a lot of things you can do with this, but sitting through the, sitting through as much as the, you know, the little seminars, the trainings, and the informative sessions that they've had between, you know, uh, congressmen and the state, state rep, and then the state of Texas Senate itself, there's really not. You know, it's very limited on what we can actually do with it. You know, and we'd love to say that we could do more with it, but you're right. These are the, the needs way over the wants. You know, and the scariest thing to say is that, that, you know, we're going to be working on all these sewer lines and all these water lines, but we, that's infrastructure, but we can't do streets. You know what I mean? So i- if anybody's concerned on what we can and cannot spend this money on, we have documentation. We welcome anybody to come out and get it. Um, and, and, you know, it's been handed to us and, and passed down to us. So, you know, I am, I'm on board with this approach. I know that lost revenue goes back into the general fund, which can be spent towards what needs it, what it needs to be spent on. And then they're limited on where else it can be spent. So, um, I appreciate the work you've done. You and I have had conversations, you and I, we sat through some of those, uh, those webinars and so forth. And I think that this is the right direction in, in the way this money can be spent. So thank you.
And for our purposes, I mean, our infrastructure is definitely in need of repair, uh, all throughout the city. And this is, in a way, this is a windfall, but it doesn't get us out of the hole we're in with infrastructure. You know, we're, we're, we're trying to get grants, and we get, you know, 300,000 here and maybe, you know, another, you know, 400,000 here. And we got that $6.9 million grant for drainage, which is going to help a lot. Uh, but on, on this aging infrastructure, this is something that's going to help, and it's not, doesn't solve a problem, but it goes a long way for some of the emergencies that we, we do have.
Mr. Molina?
It's a no-brainer.
Mr. Burke? Ms. Bowen? Any questions?
I, I thought you were saying something. So each of these projects here on the streets that, you know, it's not just temporary fix, I mean, we're going to remove and replace.
Yeah, this is typically.
Remove and replace, and then, um, the roads would be repaired as well.
Yeah, we'd be tearing, we'd have, we'd have to repair the roads.
Yeah, so it's including everything. Yeah. Okay, sounds good to me.
Okay. Wanted to ask you, on here, um, you have listed South Reynolds, and then I saw, um, Virginia Street. And I know those are included in that one, um, award that we were given, the 6.9. So that's something that, is that not part of the?
Yeah, um, well, and they're still part of it because these are the ones that need to be done. And if, if, if we're going to, we can take them off as we go. This is more of a prioritized list that we want to get from you guys, but these are the ones that we know are, need to get infrastructure done. But yeah, so there may be some double up, but we may be able to pull some off and add something else somewhere else.
Okay. Um, I wanted to ask you, I know, and counsel, I know this is important. We really need our infrastructure and stuff, and, and we want to use our funds properly and to the best, um, use because once they're gone, they're gone, and we won't, you know, we can't ever use them differently. Um, I know that there's also something, I had spoken to you a little bit, um, in reference, and I think we spoke about it too, about possibly, um, utilities, uh, just helping the citizens. I don't know if, uh, do the utility billing or, I'm not sure how it, how it can be allocated, but, and small businesses. I was just wondering if we could consider that also. Um, and I know, again, our infrastructure is very important, but I also felt that coronavirus did impact a lot of our small businesses, a lot of our residents in reference to, um, their utilities and stuff. So I'm not sure if that's something we can also discuss in the future, and if counsel would even think about that. But those are things, I just wanted to mention that. So counsel, no, no other questions or comments? Let's see. And?
Any action?
This does ask for.
Yeah, what we would be looking for is just prioritizing the, uh, the, the American Rescue Plan funds, uh, for lost revenue and water and wastewater.
Take a motion?
Yes, at this time, um, take a motion?
Mayor, I make a motion to prioritize the funds coming in from the, uh, American Rescue, make sure I get it right. From the American Rescue Plan, uh, to be more prioritized as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you, guys. Michael?
Thank you. Number 10, agenda item number 10. Discuss, consider, and act upon an application for tax refund on account number H E B S 00G 01.
Mayor, this is a, a tax refund that has to come to you guys, and it's, um, it's from H E B. Um, and so apparently they, um, they filed suit against the Jim Wells County Appraisal District on some, uh, on some overpayment of, of, uh, property tax, actually inventory tax. And so this is the amount refunded to them, uh, from the city of Alice, $1,780.76. Look on, on page 32, it gives you a breakdown of, um, of what the other entities would be getting. Their total refund, uh, it looks to be about almost $10,000, about $9,176. And it's just prorated based on the, the tax rate. So, uh, it needs, uh, needs your, your guys' approval.
Counsel, any questions or discussion? Ms. Bowen? Mr.? And Mr. Chris? Okay, so at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the tax refund on account H E B S 00G 1, G 01, as presented.
Second. Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, all opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Okay. Agenda item number 11. Discuss, consider, and act upon approving a resolution by the city of Alice, authorizing the city to participate as part of a coalition of cities in proceedings to be held by the Railroad Commission of Texas related to implementation of House Bill 1520, authorizing the hiring of attorneys and consultants, directing the activities of lawyers, and reimbursement of reasonable legal, did I skip? I'm sorry. Okay. Consultants regarding the Railroad Commission's, uh, House Bill 1520 proceedings requiring reimbursements of reasonable legal and consultant expenses to the extent allowed by law. Funding that the meeting complies with the Open Meetings Act and making other findings and provisions related to the subject and to allow for the allocation of funds not to exceed $2,000. Counsel?
John, uh, city attorney, has been working on this one and will present to you guys.
Okay.
This is basically, and the captain and staff did a really good job at putting the stuff together and presenting. So it's pretty self-explanatory, but, but really all it is, is Center Point is trying to charge, uh, their customers more money because they say that they lost more money than was anticipated or they should have, uh, in, during the freeze. And it causes, it caused them not to recoup sufficient funds. it caused them not to recoup sufficient funds as they thought to pay expenses and, and infrastructure cost and that sort of stuff. Unlike the last item that we brought before you where really we didn't have a say in it, but they wanted to be involved, which we did not request for funds to be able to be involved in this one, we do have a say that the Railroad Commission can make a ruling in our favor. The only problem of the ruling too is this is one of those situations where it, it might not, and I'm going to say probably not, it is not a reimbursable, our reimbursable action. In other words, the CenterPoint's not going to have to reimburse the funds to our attorneys to make them follow the law. In this situation, you're probably going to have to go ahead and foot the bill, but it's divided up amongst all of the groups in our coalition, so our cost is approximately $1,700 and so that's why the number's at $2,000. I would recommend going ahead and approving the resolution of the expenses.
Okay, counsel, any questions?
In the end, we're spending this money to protect our citizens from, from, from being excess billed, so we're spending taxpayer dollars in order to protect taxpayers, so I deserve that. Thank you.
Mr. Burke? Any questions? Mrs. Bowen? No? Okay, so we have no other discussion or questions, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Mayor, I make a motion approving a resolution by the city of Alice, authorizing the city to participate as part of a coalition of cities in proceedings to be held by the Railroad Commission of Texas related to implementation of House Bill 1520, authorizing the hiring of attorneys and consultants directing the activities of lawyers and consultants regarding the Road Commission's H, House Bill 1520 proceedings, requiring reimbursement of reasonable legal and consultant expenses to the extent allowed by law, finding that the meeting complies with opening, with the Open Meetings Act and making other findings and provisions related to the subject and to allow for the allocation of funds not to exceed $2,000.
Second.
Okay, we have our first and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed, same sign, motion passes. We'll move on to agenda item number 12, discuss, consider and act upon modifying, amending, extending and revising the resolution dated July 15, 2021, to extend the mayor's declaration of local disaster, border security, criminal offenses and increased expenses due to the continued emergency of the COVID-19 pandemic.
Counsel, this was the, a declaration that followed suit with the county and the declaration from the governor's office and this is basically to help law enforcement and work together and possibly get funded.
Sounds good.
Any questions?
No.
No?
No. Thank you.
Mr. Burke? Any questions? Mrs. Bowen?
No?
Good, thank you. Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Actually, I do have a question, I'm sorry. Do, does the, the governor currently have a, an a date that this will expire or should our, should our motion extend in compliance with or to follow what the governor has in place and when his, when he expires his or presents his and we rescind ours?
I would say just go ahead and act it, leave it in place because you have the potential of federal funds, not the state funds in these regards, so.
Just leave it open.
Just, just extend it until. Okay, thank you.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Mayor, I make a motion extending and revising the resolution dated July 15, 2021, to extend the mayor's declaration of local disaster, border security, criminal offenses and increased expenses due to the continued emergency of the COVID-19 pandemic.
Second. Okay, we have a first and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. We'll move on to agenda item number 13, hold a public hearing to discuss, consider and act upon requests to rezone King Street Edition Lot 2, South Half Lot 3, Block 2, known as 909 North King Street, from R2, Two Family District to B1 Business District, as shown by and therefore recorded in map records F17 King Street, Alice, Jimwells County, Texas. Mr. Patrick, you will be presenting this?
Yes, yeah, one for each. This was a, what she's passing around right now is the copy of, of a letter of not supporting the, the rezone of this property, so that wasn't, not in your packet, so I'm not sure you get a copy of that.
Oh, okay, thank you.
This property is, was originally a business district and then was converted to a residential district and is now being asked to be turned back into a business district again. The, in your packet, you have a copy of the minutes from the last planning and zoning meeting, also a copy of the, of the map of the property. You also have a list of all of the addresses that were affected by this rezone and were sent letters and out of those letters that were sent out, we did have one response and then you have a copy of that response that was just passed out to you. The Planning and Zoning Commission did, did recommend approval of the rezone.
Counsel, any questions?
You did state that this was a business district before.
It was, it was a small convenience store. It, over the years, the, the person that owned the convenience store eventually retired and then turned it into a home, re-zoned it, turned it into a home and then sold the property, so the new owner is wishing to turn it back into a convenience store again.
Mr. Berne? Any questions?
He said this was a business before. What was the name?
Citizens Convenience.
Citizens Convenience Store, yeah. This is a real small, almost looked like a portable building type though, that was there at the time, it's demolished now, but.
Okay, it's on, and it's on the west side of King?
On the west side of King, yes.
Actually, I don't know, John, that store used to be Bruce's grandmother's store and I used to live at this address that this letter came from.
Okay.
And in the past, I mean, it's been there for many years and never had any issues.
If you don't have any present issue, I understand.
No, nothing, nothing at all.
You don't have any?
I don't have an issue.
You don't have an interest?
No, I don't have any interest or any issue, it's just stating that I've, we've, I've lived there for many years.
Very familiar with the property.
Issues with the store being there. Actually, it was a convenience.
Okay, no, no, no concerns.
Mr. Burke? Mrs. Bowen? No? Okay. And this property doesn't sit on the corner then, it's just?
No, it's not, it's a.
It's offset?
One lot in.
What's at the corner?
What was that? I missed that?
It was one lot in, it's not on the actual corner.
It's like a half a lot maybe?
Right.
The corner lot.
But there's nothing on the corner, right? It's vacant.
I don't think they can build anything on it, it's not big enough by when they get the setbacks and everything.
Okay, gotcha. Oh, yeah, I can see that now, I can see that now.
And I believe there's, it's fence maybe on one side where that property is, a wooden fence?
To the north. I'm trying to look at the satellite.
Yeah, I think it's to the north.
Yeah, there's a fence, you can, you can see a fence to the north.
There's a privacy fence on north side for this neighborhood property?
Between the property and the, the home, yeah.
And taking Mrs. Khan too was the only one that was in opposition.
That's all it was, yes. Patrick, how many, how many residents, residents are in that particular area?
I can tell you the, I don't know exactly how many residents are.
How many letters went out?
21 notices were sent out to 21 different property owners and that is the, the 200-foot radius from that. Which is mostly residential.
But of course, gentlemen, you know that this was way back in the day, the times have changed when I lived there.
Does she open a public hearing?
We need to.
Does she open the public hearing?
I did, I, no, I did not, I just noticed that, sorry. So we can, before we.
No, you're not, no problem.
Okay, I completely forgot. So at this time, I'd like to open this item for a public hearing, so it is now 5:30 PM and we will open it up to the public.
Confirm you didn't have anybody sign up?
Anyone that would like to speak on agenda item number 13? Anyone? Oh, we don't have the satellite?
Yeah. While it's open, while we're waiting. This is the one right here, that's the lady that I should concern.
Oh, okay, I think I can reach that.
It could be a little small.
Okay, anyone that wish, wishes to speak on this agenda item? Seeing no one, I will close this public hearing, it is 5:32 PM. And we'll go back to our agenda. Counsel, any other questions or discussion on this agenda item? No? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion for approval of the rezone King Street Edition Lot 2, South One Half Lot 3, Block 2, known as 909 North King Street, from R2 Family, Two Family District to an R, a B1 Business District, as shown by and therefore recorded in the map records F17 King Street, Alice, Texas, Jimwells County, Texas.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed, same sign, motion passes then. Okay, we move on to agenda item number 14, hold a public hearing to discuss, consider and act upon a request to rezone Alice Farm Lots Track C and D, FB78A000.311, known as 119 Savage Street, from B3 Business District to R7 Mobile Home Park, as shown therefore recorded in map records F/17/FB078, Alice, Jimwells County, Texas. Okay, Patrick?
This also is my agenda item?
Yes.
Uh, this property, yeah, you want to open the public hearing and do that first?
Sure, if there's anyone that would like to speak in reference to this agenda item, we will open our, well, a public hearing, I'm sorry, it is now 5:34 PM and we will open our public hearing right now.
I mean, I don't really have nothing to say. So he's, he's the property owner?
I am the property owner.
You're welcome to speak to counsel if you wish at this time.
I just wanted to prove.
Or, Mr. Lemon, while we're waiting, can I explain, can I do all the data while we're waiting for somebody to?
You can. It's up to the mayor, actually, if she does, no problem with it, there's no issues.
Do you want me to kind of give a little synopsis of what it is?
While we're waiting?
While we're waiting.
Sure.
The public hearing stays open. So this property is a, currently a V3 and the property owner's wishing to rezone it to a R7, which would allow for RVs and mobile homes. And so this, I believe there already exists the, the connections for this, for the RVs that already exist on that property, I think there's four of them on there, and we did send letters out to 19 property owners. We did not receive any, any support or, or, what's the proper term, against, I don't know what the proper term would be, objections, I guess.
Objections.
A bit, in writing, we did have some verbal objections at the planning and zoning meeting, but at the end of the meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission did approve or did recommend approval of this rezone. So tonight, we do have Mr. Torres, is the property owner, is the only one that showed up today.
Counsel, any questions? It's 5:36, so at this time, I will go ahead and close our public hearing, again, it's 5:36 PM, so we close our public hearing. Counsel, do you have any questions in reference to agenda item number 14? Mr. Chris?
May I, I did receive a phone call from somebody who was objecting to the owner's property across to anyone and I did let her know that she was wel, welcome to come to the city council meeting and I don't know if she showed up at the planning and zoning or not.
I don't know which one called you, but.
Name was Mary Garcia, I think.
Yes, she did, her and her husband did show up and, and explain their, their objections to the commission.
She did call me also and, and I had another lady that called in reference to this, in reference to objecting to this.
And, and that area is a mixed-use area though, you know, there's, there's a lot of different, different things there, so.
How many trailers or recreational vehicles are they?
I believe, the application, he's requesting for four, I don't know how, I don't know how many would, would physically fit on there, but the application states four.
You say you think there are connectors?
The application says there's connections for four at four.
Okay. Wait, is that in any, is that any area where there's a problem with water pressure or sewer lines?
So our engineering department did review it and did state that sewer and water is available for the property sufficient enough to support.
But there's no, like, it's not going to be problematic for the residents already there?
Not, not that I'm aware of, no.
Well, they said it was sustainable, so it's true.
Okay. For the most part, when an RV comes in, it just uses a water hose anyway, so if it, if it was going to be affected by four, four water hoses being on, then our city has a bigger problem than, than four RVs going in there, so.
Well, that's the question though, is this going to be a transient thing or is this going to be permanent homes?
That'd probably be a question for the property owner.
Because if it's a transient thing, I would have concern about that.
I'm planning to rent it.
Do you mind stepping to the podium, sir, and stating your name, sir?
My name is David Torres. I'm, I'm planning to rent them out, so it's, I'm going to ask for like a six-month lease, it's not a, I want to rent to probably people without kids, just maybe a single person or, or maybe a couple. The RVs are big enough for that, I don't feel they're big enough for kids to be in there. So, those are my plans.
I like that, I like that better than weekend rentals or whatever, traffic.
Any other questions for Mr. Torres?
I have no questions.
Thank you, Mr. Torres.
Thank you. Thank you, David.
Any other questions, counsel, or discussion? No questions?
Can you sell the public hearing open, right?
Um, I believe.
No, she closed it. She closed it.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for this agenda item, counsel?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the request to rezone Alice Farm Lots Track C and D, FB78-A000.
May I make a motion to approve the request to rezone Alice Farm Lots Track C and D FB-78-A 000.311, known as 119 Savage Street from B3 Business District to an R7 Mobile Home Park, as shown by therefore recorded in map records, F-17 FB-078, Alice, Texas, Jimwells County, Texas.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Same. Okay. You guys have it. Motion passes. You're also for the next Agenda Item. Okay, Agenda Item Number 15. Hold a public hearing to discuss, consider, and act upon a request to rezone Wonderland Number 2, Part Lot 1, Block 10, from B1 to B2, as recorded in deed volume 1114, Page 0821, and Wonderland Number 2, Part Lot 1, East 3 Foot or 3 Feet, Lot 2, East 3 Feet of Lot 2, Block 10, from R1 to B2, as recorded in deed volume 0657, Page 0318, Alice, Jimwells County, Texas, known as 201 and 203 North Woodland.
This Agenda... Go ahead.
I'd like to go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. It is 5:41. And anyone wishing to speak in reference to this Agenda Item may step forward at this time. So... I don't see anyone. If you would like to go ahead and give us the brief...
Yes, ma'am. This Agenda Item is a continuation of some Agenda Item a couple meetings back where part, part of the property was two different lots. They rezoned one lot and then realized that they needed to rezone the second lot. So this is in addition to that. Originally, it did go through planning and zoning and council. And so this is the second part of that lot, or the second lot that's attached to that property that is being rezoned back into a business district. This was the Fashions Hair Salon that originally burnt down a couple years back and they're looking to try to redevelop that, make it into another business. We did send 18 letters out. One of them did return to sender, but we didn't receive, we received zero objections to it.
Anyone wishing to speak on this Agenda Item may step forward. I will go ahead and close our public hearing at this time. It is 5:43 PM. We will close our public hearing. And Counsel, do we have any questions or discussion in reference to this Agenda Item?
Just to be clear, this is the actual space where the buildings were already at, correct?
Yes.
Right.
So when we rezoned it, we rezoned just a little bit north of the parking lot because it was there. So now we're actually rezoning where the... It was, it was multiple businesses. It was at one time like three or four businesses. I don't know, it was a market, I think. And one time it burned down. Long Street.
No questions?
No questions?
Mr. Torres. Bowing out. No other further discussion or questions? I will entertain a motion at this time.
May I make a motion to rezone Wonderland Number 2, Part of Lot 1, Block 10, from B1 to B2, as recorded in the deed volume, in deed volume 1114, Page 0821, and Wonderland Number 2, Part of Lot 1, East 3 Feet, Lot 2, Block 10, from R1 to B2, as recorded in deed volume 0657, Page 0318, Alice, Jimwells County, Texas, known as 201 and 203 North Woodland.
Second. Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, Patrick.
Agenda Item Number 16. The City Council may enter into closed or executive session for the following matters. The City Council may enter into closed or executive session for the following matters. Attorney consultation pursuant to Section 551.071. One, Texas Government Code to provide legal advice and counsel in connection with the city's legal rights, duties, privileges, and obligations under Chapter 174. Texas Local Government Code arising out of the pending collective bargaining negotiations between the City of Alice and the duly recognized majority bargaining agent for the City of Alice Fire Department personnel. So at this time, we're in executive session.
Okay.
Okay, um, agenda item number seventeen. It is now six twenty-six. We have returned to open session. Deliberate, consider and take action necessary as a result of the discussion in immediately preceding agenda item number sixteen. Attorney consultation pursuant to section five-five-one-zero-seven-one Texas Government Code to provide legal advice counsel in connection to the city's legal right duties, privileges, and obligations under chapter one-seventy-four. Sorry, I'm out of breath. I'm out of shape. Um, Texas Local Government Code arising out of the pending collective bargaining negotiations between the City of Alice and the duly recognized majority bargaining agent for the City of Alice Fire Department personnel. Thank you.
Mayor and council members, before you is the final draft of the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Alice and the Fire Fighters Association. So your city manager, Mr. Sparsa, and the Fire Association have met over the past few months and have come to the agreement that's been TA'd, um, tentatively agreed to, and really all that awaits is the city council's final approval. The association has ratified it on their end on July sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one, so this is the last step. Staff recommends approval, and the motion can simply be a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Alice and the International Association of Firefighters Local four-one-oh-two for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one through two thousand twenty-four.
Okay, council. I'll entertain a motion or unless there's any discussion or, I think, no. Okay, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Mayor, motion as presented.
Okay. We have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed, sign.
Motion carries. Thank you so much. Thank you. You're appreciated.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you. Okay, um, move on to agenda item number eighteen. Here's status report on June two thousand twenty-one month-end financial statements and summary of funds and delivery of June two thousand twenty-one check registries, or registers, I'm sorry, and discussion on sales tax revenues. Mr. Ramos, thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Financials for the nine, nine months ending June thirty, two thousand twenty-one. We're about three-quarters into the fiscal period, or seventy-five percent. General fund revenues was eight million seven hundred fifty-one thousand six hundred and sixty-seven. Um, so that's right in line with the, with the seventy-five percent where we should be at. It's a little under. Property tax, our year-to-date budget was two million ninety-eight thousand one hundred ninety-four, and year-to-date we've received two million eight hundred forty-three thousand and twenty dollars. On exhibit B, you'll have your MNO and INS. In this case, we have two thousand twenty-one, three million eight hundred seventy-five thousand one hundred thirty-nine, and last year at the same time, we're at three million eight hundred seventy-eight thousand one hundred ninety-two. So it's about three thousand fifty-three dollars less than where we were last year at the same time. Sales tax, we budgeted four million fifty thousand, and we're at three million two hundred and thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and seven year-to-date. That's through April. On exhibit C, we have budget versus actual, and that one does include May's collection, which is not in the financials, but we, that May's collection was four hundred and thirty-eight thousand six hundred and seventy-two. We're a little under the four hundred and fifty thousand target amount, that is budget. Twenty-twenty-one budgets, three million six hundred thousand, twenty-twenty-one actuals, three million six hundred and seventy-seven thousand five hundred eighty, so we're seventy-seven thousand five hundred eighty above our budget amount. On exhibit D, we have twenty, actual twenty-one versus actual twenty, and there we're sixty thousand nine hundred eighty-two above, um, in twenty-one than we were last year at the same time. Occupation on mixed beverage, we're about fifty-three percent of our budget there. Franchise licenses and permits, we're about fifty-seven percent. Um, tender governmental, we're about a hundred and twelve percent. Our fines and forfeitures is about sixty-six percent. Miscellaneous revenues, uh, two hundred and twenty-eight percent, and our underfund transfer is right at seventy-five percent. On exhibit E, we have our general fund expenditures. Year-to-date is eight million four hundred thirty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty. That's about, it's about three percent less than our target amount, seventy-five percent. So in this case, that's a good thing. Some of your larger departments, general services at sixty-eight percent. Fire department is right at seventy-four and a half percent. Police department is sixty-nine, sixty-nine point thirty-two percent. Street, street maintenance is sixty-nine percent. Parks and play, playgrounds is sixty-eight percent, and public health, it goes is at eighty-nine percent. So for the most part, all your big departments are under budget. On exhibit F, we have, um, revenues versus expenditures for all funds. General fund, we're at three hundred and twelve thousand one hundred and seven. Solid waste fund is twenty thousand four hundred ninety-five. Utility fund is six hundred and twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and forty-one. Airport fund is thirteen thousand one sixty-nine in the negative. That's with the transfers. Uh, there was the purchase there of the mosquito hanger. That's the reason for that negative. Golf course fund, we're at twenty-eight thousand eight twenty-one in the positive with the transfer. And the hotel occupancy fund was six, sixty-five thousand two hundred and fifty-eight, and the multi-use complex is at fifty-six thousand eight hundred and six in the negative with the transfer. The last slide, we have revenues over expenditures comparing two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-one. General fund last year was a little over eighty-two thousand in the negative, and this year we're in the positive, three hundred and twelve thousand. Solid waste was ninety-eight thousand three hundred and forty-four in the negative, and this year we're about twenty thousand five hundred in the positive. Utility fund was about three hundred and fifteen thousand four forty-seven, and then positive last year, and this year we're at six hundred and twenty-nine thousand nine forty-one. Airport fund was in the negative seventeen thousand one seventy-seven, and this year it's thirteen thousand one sixty-nine. Golf course fund was ten thousand one fifty-one in the positive with the transfer, and the hotel occupancy tax fund, forty-two thousand one thirty-two in the positive, and this year it's sixty-five thousand two fifty-eight. And finally, the multi-use was fifty-one thousand five hundred and five in the negative, and this year it's fifty-six thousand eight oh six. That completes the slides. Do you have any questions?
Council, any questions? Mr. Chris?
Just a quick one. What accounts for the hundred and seventy thousand dollars in miscellaneous revenues?
Um, I believe that's the money we received, uh, from the police department for the purchase of the vehicles, uh, from the, purchase of ranches.
The white ranch. The white ranch, the grant money. Nice. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Molina?
No, thank you, Roland. Appreciate it. Good job.
Mr. Burke? Mrs. Bowen?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Vanessa.
Thank you.
Where are you going? Did you got the next one too?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
We're not doing anything. Just handing it off?
Okay, agenda item number nineteen. Deliver, delivery of proposed City of Alice fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two budget.
Mayor, what we have in front of you guys is the fiscal year twenty-two budget. Um, and charter requires it to be delivered by August the second. Uh, we're a little bit early on that. Actually, it's ninety, just, no earlier than ninety days, longer than sixty days before the end of fiscal year. Uh, it's a balanced budget, forecasting the same revenue as last year and actually being a little bit more conservative on the sales tax revenue. But uh, it's there for you guys to review and start some budget process for us and you guys. Um, and I look forward to the budget meetings we're gonna have in the workshops so we can go through, through the budget.
Okay, council, any questions? Mrs. Bowen?
No, just thank you for all your hard work on this. All of you. Thank you.
Mr. Burke? Mr. Molina?
No, no questions. Thank you, Michael.
Mr. Chris?
Just a quick statement to staff. Thank y'all for staying on top of this. I know that it's an effort of every, you know, recognizing budget adjustments as the year proceeds, and y'all have done a great job of being able to present those, and it makes this, uh, timely, I should say, when y'all stay on top of it the way you have for the last, I would say, two years, if not longer, you know, while y'all been getting everything going. So thank you very much for being up early.
Vanessa's been working right from midnight all through the next week.
Thank you, Vanessa.
Now, we gotta check one more time. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandra, adjourn us.
May I make a motion to adjourn?
I haven't opened the item.
Yeah, you haven't opened it yet.
Haven't opened the item.
Robert!
So, I'll move to agenda item number twenty. Adjourn and/or consider and act upon adjournment.
May I make a motion to adjourn?
Hey, may I have a second?
There you go.
Hey, meeting adjourned at six-thirty-seven PM. Thank you very much.